Howell Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for September 14, 2020. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 6, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 6, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 6, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. On August 11, 2020, a notice was sent to both the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger that this meeting would be a remote meeting, and on September 8, 2020, a notice was sent to both publications that the meeting would be held remotely using communication equipment via Zoom due to COVID-19 restrictions. This meeting is a judicial proceeding, and any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum must be appropriate to a judicial hearing and must be maintained at all times. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. For some housekeeping with the Zoom meeting, we will ask that everyone mute themselves with the exception of the applicant and their professional team. When the applicant is done testifying, the board members and professionals can unmute themselves and then ask your questions of the applicant. When the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature, and you will be called upon by the moderator, so please make sure you have entered your name for identifying purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Present.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Seiya? Is excused. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez is excused. Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Eileen. Mr. Troply, would you mind swearing in the professionals? Or, I know, pledge allegiance.
Very good.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Okay, Mr. Troply, you mind swearing in the professionals?
Thank you. Professionals, please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of your God?
I do.
I do.
All right, the record should reflect, tonight we have Ms. Beam, Mr. Cunliffe, Mr. Howard, and Ms. Spiro, both sworn, thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, August 10, 2020. Eligible voters, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Gonzalez, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cantor?
Well, not me, but...
No. It was Mr. Mertens, I believe.
Mr. Mertens?
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Mertens? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Correspondence?
I don't really have correspondence, but we did want to discuss our start time. I sent a text and emails to all the members regarding starting at 7:00 instead of 7:30, which I do have to notice in the paper. So we were going to start with our October meetings to start at 7:00, but then the chairman asked about starting even earlier, so we said we would have a little discussion this evening to decide on what time you would like to start the remaining meetings for this year.
My whole thing is, is we're not having to rush home from work. We're at home already, you know, why not go a little earlier than 7:00? 6:30, 6:00, whatever the board feels comfortable, but that, that's just my feeling is we're not having to rush home, eat dinner, shower, change clothes, and then go to the meeting, but we're already at home, so, you know, I don't know what the sentiments of the board would be.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes, sir.
It's a problem for me. I normally finish work about 6:00, doesn't give me much time to eat dinner and get down to the meeting, and the meeting's kind of finished too late for me to eat dinner, so I'd prefer 7:00.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to...
I would prefer 7:00, but I would go to 6:30 if everybody else is okay with it.
I myself, I'm good at 7:00. If it were convenient for 6:30 for everybody, I'd be willing to do that to a 7:00 spot.
Yeah, I'm open to whatever, you know, whatever we can do, so.
I'm the same way. Neither one, doesn't matter to me.
Any, anytime.
Okay. Okay, then let's leave it at 7:00.
Okay, I'll put a notice in the paper then that starting with our October meetings, we'll be meeting at 7:00 instead of 7:30.
And that'll just be for the duration until at least December or before if we don't need?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, but that is not for next week's meeting. Next week's meeting will still be at 7:30. It'll start with October, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have for correspondence.
Okay. Okay, resolutions, case number BA 1304A, Five Points Business Park LLC, FKA Oakerson 33 Associates LLC. Resolution granting use variance, amended preliminary and final major site plan approval. Eligible voters, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, Cantor, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Mertens.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Orozco. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Was somebody going to say something? Okay. Case before the board, case number BA 20103, Robert Weir type bulk variance for single-family dwelling with septic system. Application of Robert Weir as applicant in Lotto Coco as owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling with septic system where one acre is required and 0.713 acres exist on promises, premises known as block 150 lot 11, 22 Peskin Road. This application was partially heard June 8 when it was carried to July 27, 2020 with no further notice. On July 27, 2020, the application was rescheduled to September 14, 2020. Expiration date, October 31, 2020. Eligible voters, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Seiya, Cantor, and Nansen.
Is the attorney for the Robert Weir application here? If so, could you just raise your hand so we can identify you? Mr. Maltese or Mr. Weir, do you know if your attorney is on the Zoom meeting?
He should be. I don't see him. I could try to contact him now.
Eileen, Christine Caphone is also in the audience, somewhere for this application.
Okay, we'll move her. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, he says he's on.
We don't see him logged in. Is he under a different name?
Maybe he's in the audience. What's his name? Maybe you can see him in the audience.
His name is Rudy Maharaj, but he's not on our list.
He says it's under Rudolph.
And he can see the meeting because we don't see him attending? Mr. Maharaj, if you can hear us, maybe you can log off and log back in because we're not getting you.
He's going to call in, he said.
Okay.
You can see everybody and hear everybody. See him?
Yes, he's here now. Hold on one second. Mr. Maharaj, we have you on our Zoom.
Yes.
Do you have anyone else that needs to testify tonight? We have Mr. Maltese, Ms. Caphone, and Mr. Weir.
No, that was all. Mr. Maltese will be testifying and giving his, you know, expertise as to the plans, and Ms. Caphone will be discussing the character and the nature of the application in relation to the neighborhood.
Okay. I guess it's your turn. We already introduced the application.
Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Rudolph Maharaj. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Robert Weir, for the application ceased to, the applicant ceased to construct a single-family residence in a ARE2 zone with, which utilizes a septic system on an undersized lot where one acre is required and 0.713 acres exists. We'll start off with Mr. Maltese first.
Mr., I'm going to say Rudolph. Has everybody been sworn in, Mr. Troply?
That's not, that's correct. We need to swear Ms. Caphone in, and I also believe there's two additional pieces of evidence that will need to be listed on our evidence list. So let me start by swearing Christine Caphone in. Christine, are you there?
I am, hi.
Hi, there. There you go. Raise your right hand. I see it. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening and be the whole truth and nothing but the true self of your God.
Yes, I do.
May we have your full name, please, for the record?
Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O-Caphone, C-O-F as in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rudy, do you have, you want to mark your evidence now so you can just go right into it? I understand you have a landscaping plan and a plot plan?
Absolutely, yes. So there is a revised plot plan, which I guess at this point that'd be the fifth exhibit or the sixth exhibit on our...
Is that, hold on one second, is that the plan's last revised, August 27?
No.
Yes, is that been marked?
Yes.
They're already marked as A12, and the landscaping plan is A11.
Okay, good. I need to update my list then.
Okay.
And they have, and they have a new proof of service for tonight's meeting, and that's A13.
Very well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that said, may I proceed with Mr. Maltese, who's already sworn in?
Yes.
Previously sworn in.
If you want us to post any plans or exhibits, let us know which one, and we can put it up on the screen as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so I guess as far as that portion goes, I guess in the process of me questioning Mr. Maltese, if he's referenced something, I guess right then we'll go back to you, okay?
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Maltese, you were retained by the applicant to prepare design plans for the proposed construction, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, would you mind just briefly taking the board through the plot plan and proposed septic system plans that you have outlined?
Absolutely. Eileen, do you have to bring that up on the screen, or, okay. So we have a single-family dwelling that has a driveway access along Peskin Road. We have a septic field that has a pump system due to the nature of the seasonal high water table. We have that located at the intersection of Georgia Tavern Road and Peskin Road. We, since the last plan, we revised the area around the septic field. All the grading has included additional fill to soften the view from the approach coming in from Georgia Tavern on the northern side and Peskin Road coming from the eastern side. We've revised the site triangle easement to be larger. We also added a stone recharge trench to the rear of the property to catch any stormwater runoff from the grading of the property. And Charlie, I'm not sure if we want to, did you guys receive the alternate plan that we discussed? Charlie?
Yeah, sorry, I'm there. Yeah, Eileen, I believe Mr. Maltese sent by email to myself, and then I think he might have copied you as well, an alternate plan for the grading along the north side of the property line adjacent to Lot 12, I guess it's 02, which was like a private drainage system tying into the township system on Georgia Tavern Road. So everything else from the plans you're showing right now is the same, there was just some additional drainage along the northerly property line. So I don't know if, Eileen, if you can pull that up by email, or Anthony, if you want to re-mail that again?
I can't show that because I don't have it. Unfortunately, all of Anthony's emails to us are blocked. So Charlie, if you have it, you may have to send it to me tomorrow. I can't, I don't have that.
If I, if I forward it to you now, would you be able to open it, or?
Forward it to Matt Howard, please?
Yeah, let me do that.
Thank you. And just give him a minute.
I can also share my screen, too, if you want.
Give him a minute. If you want to try it, go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you. Is everyone able to see the plan here?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so we have one yard inlet, a second one here, and then we have a junction manhole here, basically to collect all the stormwater from the rear and pipe it along the property line to the right-of-way and then into the inlet, the existing inlet that goes along the easement of the rear of the property. We kept it on the property not to interfere with the adjacent property or to tie into any unforeseen pipe. We just wanted to bring it right to the structure, right to the right-of-way, and then right to the structure.
Charlie, real quick, do you have a problem with that?
Uh, no, I do have a couple comments. So there's a structure at the northeast corner of the property, and then the whole system is six-inch perforated HDP. So the first run to this, one of the, I guess the center of the site, that's six inches, I guess, because it's pretty shallow, the system they're tying into is pretty shallow. But I'd like to see from that center inlet all the way to tying into the Township's B for that to be, you know, larger 12-inch pipe. I would also say that, you know, this is going to be a private system on the homeowner's property. I think it would be prudent for the board to require some kind of deed restriction as to the maintenance, and then also that, like, no structures be placed on those by the applicant and that the system not be removed at any point in time, just so, you know, this applicant says they're going to, you know, live here and they're going to have a drainage system, and, you know, I don't want the lot to be sold and someone else comes in and says, "What is this?", and rips it out, and then we're causing an issue where there, where there wasn't an issue. So, and I think obviously, you know, we can, they can circulate the deed to myself and Ron as a condition of approval, just to make sure that it satisfies, you know, me from an engineering and then Ron from a legal perspective.
Mr. Maltese, do you, do the applicant have a problem with that?
I don't believe he has a problem with that. The only question I would have is going from a six-inch to the 12-inch. I like to wrap the pipe, the perforated pipe, six inches under the pipe and six inches above the pipe, and it doesn't allow us a lot of room with the high-season high-water table for a 12-inch pipe. And I think that the six-inch has plenty of volume for what we're putting into these inlets. And I have a high point located between that inlet and the front, the western side of the property to break that up.
The drawing is so small, I can't really read the elevations. How deep is the pipe? What would be the inverted pipe?
So if you can see here, we have on the soil log 6, we have a seasonal high-water table only two and a half feet down.
Is that going to run into problems on freezing?
I'm sorry?
Is that going to run into a problem with freezing during winter time?
No, which, I mean, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have an issue on freezing. We're going to, it's going to, what I have the pipe at is six inches above that. I mean, it's going to flow. We're at 0.1%. We're not exactly flat, so if any backup happens, it's going to get pushed to that, the structure along Georgia Tavern. So there shouldn't be any standing water for a long period of time.
Charlie?
So, you know, 12-inch might not be possible, but I certainly, I would prefer from the board's perspective, you know, I would just be concerned with maintenance of something six inches. The one at the northeast corner, you really only have, you know, the area in the immediate vicinity of the easterly property line that drains that. The remainder of the site drains to that one at the center of the, like, northerly property line. So pretty much anything flowing westerly from that inlet, you know, six inches is a little small. I would prefer to see something, you know, if we're talking cover being an issue, you know, 10 inches or 8 inches, you know, you get a big jump in capacity in storage in the pipe once you increase the size even two to, two or four inches, so. And then I think also it helps for a maintenance perspective. I understand Mr. Maltese's concern with putting in, you know, he wants to put in the stone around it as opposed to just a solid wall pipe because of the limited slope on it, you know, which I think, you know, a perforated, it's almost going to act like an underdrain, a French drain there. So I think, you know, obviously, it's going to collect some surface water that lands on the grass area as well, so I think that's beneficial. But I think, you know, size-wise, I think you can get something bigger than a six-inch. I would prefer to see, you know, a 10-inch at least, if not a 12-inch. You know, the cover definitely does increase as you get further to the, to the property line. If Mr. Maltese, you know, to the board real favorably, wants to, you know, provide me, you know, a profile showing the cover along there and it being an issue, then, you know, maybe we can work out the details on the final size of it, but I think something bigger than six inches is warranted.
Mr. Maltese, do you have the issue with that?
No issue with that.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Rudolph, you want to move forward?
Yes, please, thank you. And so, Mr. Maltese, just a few comments on the grading of the property itself. Can you just very briefly explain to the board the difference between the slope and the way the property situated now and how you are, our proposed design will be improving that slope and runoff?
Absolutely. There were two renderings submitted to the board as well. Eileen, did you receive both of them? They were rendering 001 and rendering 002. You're on mute.
Were they part of your regular...
You're on mute. Can you repeat, Eileen?
Were they part of your regular submission?
They were not. Rudolph, did you send that in?
I thought, I believe I did. I can, if not, I can, I got to rescan them over to Eileen if they got mixed up in some of the stuff I sent over earlier, or would you be able to just show them on the screen? And Eileen, I'll email them to you.
If you, if you send them to Matt Howard?
Yes.
Or can Anthony put them up himself?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, that would be fine. Thank you.
Okay.
And you can send them, Rudy, you can send them to me tomorrow.
Okay, awesome. Will do.
So a quick rendering showing the location of the house, some landscape area here, and some landscaping behind the septic field along Georgia Tavern. There's an existing large tree to remain. This area here has been, all this area here and the area at the intersection of Peskin and Georgia has been filled in to soften the look of the mounded system. I also have another rendering that I could show everyone. Let me see if this works. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay. So these are perspectives coming up, Georgia Tavern. You'll see in view one, we have the, what it looks like now, the intersection, and this is how it will look after. So you can see that this comes up slightly where the septic area is. There's some landscaping here, there's some landscaping on the other side. And then along Peskin Road, we did the same perspective. This is what you see from the stop sign currently, and after construction, this is what it will look like. It was so soft, the grading, that we added the gradient line so you can see the differential of how it'll look.
Mr. Maltese, was there any reason why you decided to, why the septic tank could not be moved from its current location?
The septic field, it could be slightly moved, but the way we have the, let me open up the plan. So if you see the plan here that we have currently, our neighboring, there's a well next door, and if you do 100-foot radius, we can't put any septic field in this area. We can potentially flip the house, face to the Georgia Tavern Road. There's a lot more traffic here. The septic field, it could be slightly moved, but the way we have the, let me open up the plan. So if you see the plan here that we have currently, our neighboring, there's a well next door. And if you do 100 foot radius, we can't put any septic field in this area. We can potentially flip the house, face to the Georgia Tavern Road. There's a lot more traffic here. And if we put the driveway on Peskin, we'd be really close with driveway coming in near the stop sign. We felt this was the most beneficial area. It was the higher end of the site. And if we had put it anywhere else, we'd have to, we'd have a higher system because we would still have to mound it up. So this was the best fit for the, this type of septic field.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question about the landscaping in front of the septic field? I'm taking that as a yes. So my question is, is that you have some landscaping kind of on the north side of the septic field. And then you have landscaping kind of along Peskin. I'm looking for the front of that septic field to be screened. So while I appreciate what you've done and this view is great, but there's a whole area in the front along, like, parallel to Georgia Tavern Road that's outside of the site triangle that I'm looking to have some landscaping put in.
Are you speaking of this area?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can definitely do some small bushes. We can't have any trees within 10 feet.
I mean, I would defer to Shari with respect to like what could go there, but I'm looking to just soften it. So something in there, whatever she thinks is appropriate would work for me, but I, I'm looking for something there.
The, the letter from Monmouth County Board of Health doesn't allow us to plant anything within 10 feet of the field. So I'm not sure if we can, what we can do here.
Mr. Maltese, what about some sort of ornamental grass area over there? Because I'm assuming you're gonna have lawns. So I don't think there'd be too much of a difference if they did ornamental grasses.
Right.
You'd probably soften it with a, a few different varieties. So then you'd get different textures and colors with, you know, a few different species of ornamental grasses.
Yeah, the only concern I would have with that is if, it has to be under 30 inches in the site triangle. And sometimes those get overgrown.
Well, I mean, that would require maintenance by your client, right? I mean, so you know, we're looking to soften the look of a septic system. That's kind of, and I, I agree, you've regraded it. So it's not as much of a hill, but you still are, you know, a couple of feet above the elevation on the road there. So they may have to actually, you know, maintain the crafts.
Yeah, there, there are certain species that you, you could pick them out based on, you know, the height that they get. You know, because really those ornamental grasses, you only cut once a year. So you just have to pick them based on that height.
Okay, yeah, we'd definitely try that.
Right.
I just, I got one question. If you pivoted the septic around, you know, the, the, the Peskin roadside, if you pivoted pivoted that to the right a little bit, where it's 10 feet or 12 feet off of that, that site triangle there, that would give you more room to be able to plant, correct? Is there any problem doing that pivot?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that? Are you saying to, to move the septic field location?
No, leave the, leave the, the top corner closest to Georgia Tavern in the same place. The pivot, the Peskin roadside, just kind of twisted a little to the, you know, the bottom to the.
I think he's suggesting perhaps make the septic field parallel to Peskin Road. So if you pivot it a little, you can make the square both parallel to Georgia Tavern and to Peskin Road, which would give you a little bit of additional root there. Root there.
Yeah, so Anthony, if you took the hypotenuse of that side triangle and you took your left edge of your septic and made it parallel with like a consistent offset, I think you could get space in there for plantings. I think that's what they're asking for.
Wait, Mr. Maltese, is there any detriment as far as the system goes? Why, like, as far as like, I guess, I assume you're shortening that length and right to the house? When you, once you rotate it?
Yeah, there's no issue there.
There's no issue. Okay. Just wanted to double check.
Well, that, that way it, it suffices everybody. You're 10 feet off with your plantings. You're, you know, you, you make, you can even, you're hiding it, you're contouring the slope in better because it's giving you more distance to Georgia Tavern, you know, to, to make that growth, that grade fade in. So, you know, I, I think if you could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, I think we could do that. We could wrap this landscape bed and tie it together, one end to the other, and then rotate this parallel to Peskin.
Well, and also parallel to the house.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a problem with that, Charlie and Jen?
No, I think that'd be great because then we could get some added landscaping in there. And, you know, I would just say, just make sure you work with Shari and she's good with the whatever species type you pick. But I think that will help soften it a lot.
The only comment that I have, Mr. Chair, is obviously, I think Monmouth County Board of Health, they had noted they have witnessed suitable soil borings for the septic system, but I don't think they've issued an approval for it. So for whatever reason, if Monmouth County Board of Health says something that the system has to be higher, changes the grading, I would request that the applicant be required to come back to the board, you know, so the board can have eyes on it again. You know, should it, should it change based on their approval?
Okay. Mr. Tropoly. Mr. Tropoly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
With the issue of coming back to the board with that, with this, if, if, if the grade had to change, then yeah, I, I could see that. But if it didn't have to change, I think, you know, minor little deals could be handled as part of the resolution, you know, with Charlie and Jennifer, correct?
Provided that it is minor and an insignificant change, I think anything beyond that would have to come back to the board.
Okay. That's what I needed in answer.
You know, more or less like an administrative or, you know, decision that perhaps Charlie would be comfortable when making. But anything beyond, you know, a de minimis change, I believe, would require additional board review.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would say, you know, anything on the, on the order of maybe half a foot, you know, to eight inches or less would be very minimal. Anything above that, we're, we're talking about, you know, three feet of fill on the front yard there. It's a little bit bigger change. And then the gradient contours are pushing further out into the site triangle. You know, I think it would be something that the, the board might be interested in.
Okay. Mr. Maltese, do you have a problem with that?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rudolph?
Yes, thank you. So, I mean, as of right now, I believe Mr. Maltese has kind of gone through the entire, you know, application as presented as far as the grading plan. And I just, did we discuss the drainage? We already talked about the drainage and how it's gonna benefit the, the, the proposed construction. So with that, I'd be willing to move on to Ms. Cofoni's testimony as well as far as the planning, try to get some negative criteria.
Okay, Mr. Rudolph, let me open it up to the board for any questions of Mr. Maltese first, before we move forward. Professionals, Jen, do y'all have any further questions or comments for Mr. Maltese?
I do not.
Charlie, do you have any further?
Yeah, I just want to summarize some things that were said at the last meeting, just to make sure there's no change of that. I think we asked, I had a question about basement. An applicant said there would be no basement. The shed that's on the site is to be removed. You know, we talked about RSIS. It's a four bedroom house. They're providing three spaces, one in the garage and then two in the driveway. You know, they agreed to get a soil import expert permit, should the board rule favorably, from the engineering department as a condition of the approval. Sorry, I had one more thing in my head. I can't remember what it was. Oh, wow. So I could think why we originally carried after the first meeting was the issue with like buy sell letters and things like that. Has, we have those, right?
Yeah, those have been sent out and we, there were no responses.
Okay.
No, no takers.
Perfect. I just want to make sure we got it on the record. Thank you.
No problem.
Is that it, Charlie?
That's it for engineering.
Okay. All right, let's go through the board. Yes, Mr. Pera.
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to mention, you, you were talking about the drainage on the back of the property. You have that one large tree to remain. I just wanted them to take a better look at the distance that will be from that tree and if, if we're sure that can stay with those changes.
It's about 10, 10 to 15 feet, or I believe it's about 10 feet. And I don't think it's any issue. We're only, we're digging down probably a foot and a half. So I don't, I don't think it's gonna be any foreseeable issue over there.
A foot and a half, 10 feet off the center of the tree or 10 feet off that picture?
I'm gonna have to open the plans up and take a measurement here.
You know, because those graphics obviously aren't really what that tree looks like.
Yeah, it's a pretty big tree.
Yeah, and it's actually pretty decent.
Yeah, the, the pipe's about exactly 10 feet off. The center line of the pipe is 10 feet off of the tree.
From the center of the tree?
Yes.
We are close.
Yeah. 10 feet.
I mean, you know, I guess, well, let's do the best you can. I'd say whoever you're gonna have construct that needs to be aware that they're trying to save the tree and not rip all the roots when they do that.
My question, Cherry, would be if they started, if they put more of an angle on the pipe from, from the property line to there, would that help any?
I mean, the further away from the tree, the better. I mean, for a tree that size, 10 feet really isn't that much. But it's, it's not bad. It's certainly better than, you know, when you construct next to it with a sidewalk. If they can remove it any further, that would be better.
Mr. Maltese, when it, I, I saw the, the drawing whenever you had it up. Is there gonna be a catch basin down by the tree where it's gonna do the angle?
I can, I can bring that back up again if, if I'm allowed. So right now, the way the pipe is shown, well, we could push the pipe to the, to the edge of the property, a foot off. And then that'll be, that'll be 10 feet from the center of this tree.
Well, even if you took it back into the property and start your angle, that, that last manhole?
I'm not, I'm not sure what angle. We're gonna be running parallel to the, to the side yard line.
Yeah, I know, but you're also gonna be to your, your, you're going out past the, the right of way to the property, you know, the, for Georgia Tavern. If you move that back to your property and then come out on a, on an angle, you know, more like a 45 angle to the catch basin there.
Right. Me, me and Charlie discussed running this all the way to the right of way and then running it to the structure. I know what you're saying. You're saying run it, run it into the easement to the back of the, the structure?
Oh, no, no, no. If, if you, you stay on your property, you move that manhole, say, yeah, say 20 feet back on your property.
Back this way to?
Yeah, towards, towards your proposed yard inlet number two. Move that 20 feet back and then start your angle to the catch basin. You're still gonna miss, you know, you're still gonna be within the easement.
I see what he's saying.
Charlie?
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, if I could jump in, I think the reason that Mr. Maltese hasn't shown the way it is, it, it is a township easement along the neighbor's property to the north. I think Mr. Maltese indicated a concern of whether or not any type of structure piping would, you know, cause any issues with the neighbors. So his intent was to try to keep it entirely on his property and then make the turn in the right of way. The neighbor's property to the north, it's a little unclear from the plan that's depicted on where exactly the neighbor's property frontage, you know, comes out into the, the, closer to the roadway, the back edge, the east edge of that catch basin. As you can see, their property line doesn't necessarily match up with the applicant's property line because they've dedicated right of way to the township. So if they were to make that turn, they would be crossing over a corner, potentially crossing over a corner of the neighbor's property, even though it's in the township easement, it's, it's technically still the neighbor's property. So I think the orientation that's shown was to, to either keep it on the neighbor's property or entirely in the public right of way.
Well, am I right or wrong? If, if they move that manhole back in their property 20 feet from where it is and then go right straight through the corner there, you put a line there, you're further away from the tree, but you're still staying out, out of the neighbor's property, even, even with the right of way line there.
Nah, so, so it's, it's very, it's hard to tell from the plan. Anthony, can you zoom that to that area a little bit better?
Sure. Is that better?
To the left, scroll to the left, sorry.
This is the tree we're trying, we're talking about right now.
No, not that tree. The one at the northwest corner is what they're talking about.
On the catch basin.
This one?
Yeah, that's the one they're talking about. So if you look at the northwest corner of the property, there's a rebar with cap set. That's the applicant's property line. They've done right of way dedication. It looks to be like the symbol of a monument. And then also, you know, to the left of that, there also looks like, you know, the neighbor's potential property line for their front yard on Georgia Tavern. Whether, they've also dedicated right of way, you know, to the neighbor's limits or to that monument. I can't really tell you without, you know, seeing a survey for the property or some type of deed. So I think their intent, like I said, is the catch basin is though that they're, they're staying within the townships right of way and, and not cutting over the corner of the neighbor's property there. So.
I, I, I understand now. I can see, see that right here, that monument. There's a monument there, right?
Yes.
Okay. I, I follow. Okay.
We could definitely move the pipe closer to the, one foot off the property line. That's no issue.
Okay, that would, that would help.
Mr., sorry if I could just jump in. So I have no issue with that for like in the general vicinity of that tree. I, I would say, Anthony, if you could add another structure so the remainder of the system can maintain that offset. The, the, the more you push that towards the property line, the more you're, you know, grading, you know, that area, you know, potentially within the neighbor's easement. I'd like to keep all disturbance and grading on your property as much as possible. So where you have a high point, you know what I mean? Or at that point, if you could put in another structure and then start, you know, have a short bend where it comes in closer to the property line. So the remainder of the system, you know, is where it is. And then you're just shifting the last, you know, 40, 50 feet to be closer to the property line to, to get it further away from the tree.
So about here? Put another structure somewhere in this area here?
Yeah, 20, 30 feet.
Yeah, 20, 30 feet back. So the pipe does a jog and it's only the last 30 or 40 feet coming into the right of way. That's, that's close to the property line.
Right, but if Shari has that concern with this 24 inch tree too, then I, I need to keep the pipe 10 feet back here. Right now, this is about eight feet. So I need to push the pipe here.
Shari, was your, your concern was with both trees?
I mean, I was referring to the 36, but yeah, it's really the same issue on the 24 inch.
So I mean, this is a natural high point. We didn't plan on grading any of this area here. It's, it's a natural high point, 9714. It's just, it is what it is. We weren't gonna put any low point there.
So what I would say, Mr. Chairman, if the board rules favorably, I would just like to see some more detailed grading around the vicinity there just to make sure that, you know, that we're not causing any grading, grading impacts, you know, on the neighbor's property with the proposed, you know, yard grades. So.
Right. Um, I just also had some minor comments in my letter. Did you see that, Mr. Maltese?
Yes, we have no issues addressing all of them.
Okay, as well as a, a front yard tree with like a lone Peskin, anywhere, a shade tree would be nice.
Yes.
Okay.
No problem there.
All right. So when you put together additional landscaping, if you want to email me, you know, what you guys. All right, so when you put together additional landscaping, if you want to email me, you know, what you guys drafted, you know, and I'll take a quick look, that's fine.
Okay.
That it, Cherry?
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the board have any more questions for Mr. Maltese?
Yeah, I, let's get out of, Mr. Maltese's, there we go. I, I'm gonna go one by one, uh, Mr. O'Donnell, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, uh. I think everything's gone over pretty good, and I really don't have any questions at this point.
Mr. Hughes?
No, sir, uh, I think we've addressed quite a bit here, and, uh, I'm good to go.
Mr. Cantor?
I have two questions about the trees.
Yes, sir.
First of all, do the tree roots of the existing trees interfere with the work of that or future work of that pipe that drains the water out of the north side of the property? Is, is there a possibility that the roots would?
Yeah, it's a possibility, but I'm not a tree expert, but I don't believe that it's gonna interfere with, uh, actually killing the tree.
Okay, well, get the tree expert to maybe try to put input on that. And then the other thing would be the replacement tree, you are taking down a thirty-six inch tree to put up the house, so I'd wanna make sure that there was a comparable tree being replaced on Pescan Road as, as Ms. Spiro, uh, requested.
Yes, there's two, two, two thirty-six inch trees in the footprint and one next to the driveway of the twenty-four inch tree.
And, and we're gonna replace those?
With the shade tree, yes, we'll, we'll do that.
That it?
Uh, just to be clear, are, how many, you mentioned a few trees, are you, how many are they planning on putting in?
Uh, we can replace the, the, uh, one, two, three, four, five trees. Five, at least five shade trees to replace the ones taken down on the site.
Okay. Thanks.
Were you gonna look at the species, Cherry?
Um, yeah, I'm assuming he'll send me them, you know, because when we had discussed additional landscaping, uh, along the main road, uh, you know, yeah, I'll definitely comment.
Hey, that it, Mr. Cantor?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, Mr. Maltese, the only thing I was wondering is that planting bed on the triangle of Pescan and Georgian Tavern, is that gonna be far enough away from the road, it won't be any visibility issue with the, the plants there?
It will be out of the site triangle easement.
Okay.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Mr. Roscoe?
That's okay, no, no, no question.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Rudolph, we can move forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maltese, uh, right now, we're gonna move on to our planner, uh, Ms. Christine Cifoni to discuss the, uh, you know, the zoning, the zoning plan and, and things like that. Uh, Ms. Cifoni, have you reviewed the plans repaid, prepared by Mr. Maltese?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and could you please just, um, you know, briefly run through them and give, give your description, your opinion as far as, uh, from a planning perspective?
So from a planning point, this is a very straightforward case. We are essentially conforming to all the setbacks for the zone. However, ever in the ARE two zone, we are, would be considered an existing undersized lot and that we have, um, just under an acre where we have point seven one three, um, acres. So we need basically a, a lot area variance, and we also need a lot depth variance because the lot depth is two hundred feet, and we're taking our lot depth at one forty-two, point sixty-five to Pescan Road. So essentially, as this case sets up, this is a great argument for a C-one hardship variance because without this variance relief, these, this lot would be zoned into inutility, meaning that you couldn't possibly develop the property without some reasonable variance relief. So it sets up as a classic C-one hardship case. Also, I would remind the board that back in nineteen eighty-seven, there was an approval, um, of this for, to build a single-family home. One of the conditions of approval in conjunction with the nineteen eighty-seven, um, application was that the per, the permits to build the house would be pulled within a year, and they weren't so that they, um, were not in compliance with the conditions of that approval. But in addition to meeting the C-one statutory criteria as a classed up hardship case, I think the board can also grant this under the C-two flexible C criteria with certain purposes of the land use law being advanced. I think the board can rely on criteria E, which talks about appropriate population densities, given the fact that, um, lot eleven point oh one in the area is one acre, eleven point oh two is point nine four acres, lot twelve point oh one is point seven four acres, and I think those lots are all surrounding. And interestingly, in the nineteen eighty-seven approval, some of the findings of the facts indicated that, that the lot was consistent with the lot sizes in the area. So I think the board could certainly rely on criteria G, or criteria E, which is appropriate population densities, but also criteria G, which is to, um, allow sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. I know we've been, this is our second hearing on this matter, we've worked hard as a team, we've had actually a lot of calls and preps on this to sort of get the, the grading right and the landscaping right. I know there were some section, suggestions earlier how we could really screen that western section a little bit better with maybe some grasses and plantings. You heard a willingness on behalf of the application to do that, and I think that that will certainly allow us to meet our burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria. As the board well knows, the negative criteria does not ask you to hold us to any, to, to the standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment. And there is no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good. So while it is an undersized lot, I see no substantial detriment to the public good, given the fact that back in nineteen eighty-seven, and based on my findings today as to the size of the lots in the area that I just cited, we would be not inconsistent with the character of the lot area. Also, I would just like to point out to the board that in May two thousand seventeen, when you last reexamined your master plan, there was a statement in there that talks about encouraging and supporting the rehabilitation and infill of housing stock where appropriate and maintaining the character scale and privacy of the established residential neighborhoods in the township. So, um, we're not a used variance, we're permitted to be in the ARE two zone, but I just thought it was important to bring that to the board's attention, that it is one of the goals in the township's master plan to allow for infill development. And certainly allowing for residential development on existing undersized lots would be consistent with that. We also need, um, a very, a, a minor variance for an accessory structure in the front yard. This is a corner lot, so we have frontage on Georgia Tavern and Pescan, so we have done the best of, um, to our ability. Mr. Maltese presented an exhibit earlier this evening that basically showed you that we're constrained as to where we can put that septic field. Um, and I think with the landscaping that we are proposing and the landscaping that you have, your professionals, Ms. Beam, um, and Ms. Spiro and, um, Charlie have asked us to provide, we can certainly landscape it such that there's not going to be a negative impact. So taken together, I think we meet our statutory burden of proof under the C-one and C-two criteria, and the variance relief that's requested in conjunction with this application can be granted with no substantial detriment to the zone plan, and even further that it does advance some of the objectives, or at least one of the objectives in your two thousand seventeen master plan.
Okay, I mean, that was a lot, thank you, I appreciate it. And at this point, I guess, uh, you know, to in your opinion, is the aesthetic of the lot actually improved by this proposed development?
Well, yeah, it's a brand new single-family home, and we're proposing to landscape it, so, um, to the extent you find new construction appealing, of course, it would be improved, um, by the application.
Okay, and I have no more questions for Ms. Cifoni unless the board, uh, would like to go.
Jennifer?
I have no comments, um, I think that Ms. Cifon has adequately addressed the relief that the applicant is seeking. I think that the, the buy-sell letters that we were looking for at the last, uh, meeting that have been sent out with zero response addresses the undersized lot, so I have nothing, um, further that I need for this application.
Mr. Charlie?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, board members, Mr. O'Donnell, do you have any questions, Ms. Cifon?
No, I don't.
Mr. Hughes?
No, sir, I'm good to go, thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
Oh, Chairman Nansen, I am good.
Mr. Martins?
I'm good too.
Mr. Moretti?
No questions, I'm good.
And let me back up, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Maltese?
No, I don't, thank you.
Mr. Roscoe?
I'm good.
Okay, uh, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to public. Uh, can I have a motion to open the public?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to open the public.
A second.
Second by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Mr. Tropoli, at this time, we can open the public. Mr. Howard, if you want, uh, Eileen, you can address the public, please.
If there's any member of the public that has questions or comments regarding the application that was just heard by the board, please use the raise your hand feature, and the moderator will call on you one at a time.
Also, they need to be sworn in too.
Mr. Carney, since you're on the phone, did you have any questions or comments on this application?
I do not.
Thank you. We do have someone, hold on.
Eileen, they need to be sworn in.
Yes.
We're just gonna give this a couple minutes.
Okay, sir.
We do have one member of the public that had trouble, and they're gonna log back in, so give us a minute, please.
Okay.
If there's any other member of the public that has questions or comments, please raise your hand now. Ms. Conover, do you have a question or comment on this application? I have a Beth Conover on the line, Beth, do you have a question or comment on this application? Is there any other member of the public who wants to ask questions on this application? Mr. Chairman, we're not seeing anyone else who's raising their hand to ask a question. I do have a Conover on here, but they're not saying anything, so I can't tell. Hold on.
Hello?
Yes, can you speak up, because we? All right, hold on one second. All right, you have to speak loud, because my volume's up as high as it goes. We have.
Yeah.
Okay, before the, the gentleman starts speaking, I'd like to swear him in, if I may, Eileen?
Okay.
Okay, um, first of all, can you hear me well?
Yeah.
Okay, so raise your right hand, please, I cannot see your right hand, but I will assume that it's up, is that correct?
Yeah.
Like you swear the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, saucy God.
Yeah.
We'll need your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is John Conover, and I live at the two twenty Pescan Road, which is adjoining to the lot.
Okay, go ahead, sir, questions?
I see where you've addressed the drainage going my wa, my direction, or going east. You're actually now pushing the water to the west, is that correct?
What?
Yes, that's correct.
Question for the engineer, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
My concern is that water all drains from that lot, mostly drains east and settles behind our house and the neighbor to the north. And there's no drainage out of that area. So when it's very wet, the water lays there on the surface, and there's actually standing water, a lot of water.
Yes, that's correct, there is a low spot in the back of that property.
You're pushing that water now, that water should be going to the west?
Through pipe flow, correct, we're gonna push the water to the rear of the property and then through the pipes, it'll drain to the west, underground.
Okay. My other question is, my well, was, you have a, you have a, uh, you, you have a spot where my well is, you know where it is. It is, the wellhead actually sits below grade in a concrete box. Uh, when there's heavy rain, water runs off on, in to that, uh, concrete box, and we can discolor our water at times. So my concern is draining, the water drainage off of your, off of the property, onto my property, and into that concrete box.
There's, we, we've eliminated, uh, I would.
There's, we've eliminated, I would say ninety-five percent of the water draining near your property. Currently, the entire property drains to the rear, and we've eliminated, we actually brought on the eastern, uh, let me see here, on the eastern side of the property, where the lot lines are shared, we've created a swale to push that water to the rear of the property away from the well and away from the common line.
Okay. The house elevation now is, is what, off of the current grade?
Off the current grade, it's approximately four feet. The finished floor is about four feet higher than the grade.
Right, that's considerable. And so now you're gonna create a swale between our properties so that water shunts down to the back?
The finished floor is not, doesn't signify where the ground level is, so the ground's only coming up in that area of a foot, twelve inches at the max, alongside your property. So it's about twelve inches max.
Twelve inch of a rise in the grade, is that what you're saying?
Along your, near your property, correct. Max. It's actually, it's very, very close to grade in most areas.
Okay, because we have very large, mature trees along the property line, and I'm very concerned about any of the, any of the action, either grading, smothering the roots, or causing the tree damage.
We'll be tying it to existing grades along the property line.
Okay. That was what my questions were, thank you.
Okay, do you have any comment?
No, my concern was the water gets coming my way. I have plenty of water, I don't need any more. And the existing trees are mature, and I don't wanna lose them to massive grading or landfill. That's my concern, and my wellhead that's below grade, I don't want that getting swamped any more than it normally does.
And did the applicant, did Mr. Moltis pretty much address your concerns there?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if it works out exactly, if it works out to what he's saying, I think that would be, that would be acceptable.
Okay, okay, sir, thank you for your comment, and thank you for your time. Sorry it was hard to get on to ask your questions or comments there, but thank you for your time there.
Well, it worked, so it's good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else from the public wishing to make a comment or ask a question? Please raise your hand. Eileen, do we have any more hands being raised?
There's no other members of the public with their hands raised.
Okay. Well, professionals, any further comments or questions?
Not me.
No, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Spiro? Okay, at this time, can I take a motion to close public?
I'll make a motion to close the public.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Martins, seconded by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, see you in a... What's the pleasure of the board with this application?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application based upon, and contingent upon, pivoting the septic field and adding the plantings along the Georgia Tavern Road, and to work with Shari on the types of plants. And of course, this is all based upon the Monmouth County Health Approval. Obviously, if something major changes, they'll be coming back to us, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, that approval by Mr. Hughes, we have a second.
I'll second that, with also the caveat that Mr. Conover's concerns be looked into to make sure that none of that water flows back to his property, causes many issues.
Do you have a motion by Mr. Hughes, seconded by Ms. Moretti? Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I do wanna emphasize, I've noticed the applicant is limiting, there's not too many trees that he's taken out, and he is taking concern from our tree expert to save the large trees there, and I think he's making some concessions to us, and I vote yes for this.
Thank you. Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Based on all testimony that's been placed on the record from our professionals, our board members, and all of the concessions issued by Mr. Moltis and the applicant, I vote yes, and good luck with that.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the board is gonna take a ten-minute recess.
Okay, we ask everybody to be back at nine oh two.
Okay.
And everybody will be muted until then, thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen, I'm signing off.
Okay, Shari, thank you. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Yeah, you caught me shoving an apple pie.
Oh, where's mine?
Oh.
Harry just made it. Went right through his grant. So, okay.
I think we have everybody?
Everybody back? Looks like it.
Shari left the meeting, she's not required on these two applications.
Not even on the battery?
No. So everyone is still here at the meeting.
Okay. Orozco, we're missing somebody.
No, we have everybody.
Where's Hughes?
He's there up in the, oh.
Oh, okay, there he is.
An empty chair.
I'm just washing my hands, guys, sorry.
Okay, uh, I don't know what we need to do with this. Mr. Tropoli? You're on mute, Mr. Tropoli. There you go.
Yes, sir.
Case number BA fourteen oh seven, A2 Town Holdings, One LLC in Town Holdings, Two LLC. There's no testimony on the application, it will be rescheduled with notice to property owners and the public. So we really don't need to do anything with it, correct?
That's correct. Do we have a date yet, Eileen?
No, I don't. I gave them a couple dates, and they're gonna get back to me.
Well, they, they need to quit dragging their feet here.
I know.
Now, this is, this is turning into another Secudes.
Yeah, except it's not a code case, so we can't push them.
No. So... Okay, so we don't need to do anything with it, okay, so...
But just, just make a general announcement, I think, that the case will be rescheduled with public notice.
Okay, case number BA fourteen oh seven, A2 Town Holdings, One LLC in Town Holdings, Two LLC, will be rescheduled with notice to property owners and the public at a date. That's really it, so in case there's anybody in from the public for that application, will be re-noticed. Is that good enough? Okay, next case on the agenda, BA nineteen twelve, Damian Mizoski, I think, I hope I'm saying that right. Bulk variance for a chicken coop in rear inside yard setback. Application of Damian Mizoski, as applicant owner seeking bulk variance approval to maintain a chicken coop in the rear inside yard setback on premises known as Block Two, Lot Eighteen, Ninety Western Drive. Exploration date, October third, twenty twenty. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I hope I said your name correctly.
Mizachi.
Mizachi, okay. I won't get it wrong the next time. Okay, do you have any witnesses, or is it just yourself?
The majority of the questions, if you would please, to be addressed to my wife. She's been the primary on this application and contacting the parties requested.
Okay, what you need to do is get both of you sworn in, then.
Just hang on one minute, because Mr. Mizachi, I don't have Jennifer on here. She was, we moved her in to participate, and now she's gone. So she needs to log back in.
There she is.
Okay, now we're ready to proceed.
Okay, I need to get both of you.
Can Mr. and Mrs. Mizachi, can you hear me, please?
Yeah, somebody's...
Yeah, we're not getting you.
Try again.
Folks, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Jennifer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Raise your right hands, please. We'll swear you in. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of God.
I do.
I do.
Yes, Jennifer, starting with you, maybe we have your full name for the record?
Jennifer Doherty Mizachi.
Thank you. And sir, your name, please?
Damian Mizachi.
Very good. All sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mizachi, what, what are we doing here?
Are you talking to me, or did you say mister?
Whoever's testifying.
So, so basically, we have a chicken coop that is over the property line right now, and we are looking to keep the chickens. They were all rescued chickens. We're trying to set it so that it's, so the current, the current property guidelines are seventy-five feet from the property line, which isn't doable with our size lot. And what we're trying to do is do fifty-five feet from each property line and two feet from Howell Township property line. There's about twelve acres of woods behind our house that belongs to Howell Township, and we're just trying to get the chicken coop completely on our property and keep them.
Mr. Howard? Yeah, Matt, is this a code case by chance?
It is. My office received a complaint about the chicken coop. We went out, verified that it is on the property, doesn't meet the setbacks. That was some time ago. This application took a while to get here, and I could say there's been no follow-up complaint, so at least, you know, it's not been a pressing, it's not been a pressing matter through my office or with the neighbors, but it was a complaint that brought us here.
Okay, do you have an issue of them moving that back in on their property, and then, you know, trying to make it fit the best way they can? Now, another thing, is this a temporary structure?
Yes. It is a, it is a temporary structure. It's a pop-up shed with a dog run attached to it, and I have contacted the DEP about it, and they said that they don't regulate that. They said even if, which I also sent a copy of the email to Eileen Rabano, that, that they don't regulate that, and that it's considered a temporary structure, and they said if anything, you just have to get the okay from the health department, which I, I did get the okay from them.
Okay, you do have that?
Yes.
Did you submit that with your application?
Yes.
Okay. Eileen, do we have a copy of that?
One second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, that's all I'm asking for.
That's fine, there's a lot of papers.
Yeah, Matt, do you have issues with them, with that temporary structure with that?
Not particularly, but it will be up to the board to grant the variance of course.
No, I understand that, but I, I need your input on this, because you, you had to deal with the complaint.
Yeah, like I said, there's been no follow-up complaint. It's been well over a year, probably longer, since we initially received it. I haven't had any secondary complaints from any other neighbors. So in my, in my book, there was one person that was aggrieved by it. We'll see if they're in the audience tonight to give testimony. But other than that, had it not been for that complaint, we would not have ever noticed this, unless we went for an inspection on the property. So I'm not sure how long it's been here, but it's really not causing any problems for my office that I know of.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Not that it's really completely relevant, but the complaint that was received, I know who filed the complaint, doesn't actually live in Ramtown. It was a personal matter, and it was just not, it was a pretty vindictive thing to do, because they know I love these chickens very much, and they've all been, they've been rescued from various places. Every single one of my neighbors has handwritten a letter, as well as multiple neighbors down the block and everything. I mean, they're kind of like a, like a, like a neighborhood mascot at this point, and I do a lot of education with small kids and stuff on the block and in the neighborhood, and I haven't received any negative feedback at all from anybody in this neighborhood.
Okay, Charlie, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify, so I think when Ms. Mizachi first was speaking, she said it was not on her property, it was over the property line. So her sketch shows it is two foot on the inside of her property, and then, you know, it's plus or minus fifty-five feet from the adjacent properties to the east and west. So it is on her property, you know, she's not asking for relief for, you know, on the township's property or someone else's property. Obviously, the requirement, so, so housing livestock, it's not an issue of that. That's covered under right to farm for all residential zones in the town, so it's really just a matter of the setbacks. The ordinance requires seventy-five feet from all property lines. You know, from the north, if we're looking at seventy-five feet, that would probably put it in the center of the structure, or maybe into the front yard. So I don't know that that's necessarily something that's achievable. And then obviously, like she mentioned, to the east and the west, the lot itself, I believe, is only a hundred and fifty-five feet wide. So that really only leaves you with, you know, a five-foot space for a chicken coop and, you know, and a run. So that's, that's where we're at with why she's here asking for the relief from, from the setbacks. She provides some testimony, she provided documentation of some correspondence she have with DEP. I was just concerned, because there is a water body running along the east side of the property that is, you know, category one water, and there's some map wetlands or anything like that. But she had provided documentation from DEP that says they don't regulate temporary structures, you know, within those, those areas. And I will also note that the, the stream isn't de-restricted on any, on the tax map, or indeed she provided as a conservation unit, so there is no issues with anything like that. They're asking for a handful of waivers as outlined in my letter, which I wouldn't have any exception with the board granting, given the scope of the application. I think more so the testimony comes down to, you know, how many chickens, are we just talking about hens, roosters? You know, I think in the application submission, you said you might have up to three roosters, is that still currently...
Yes, yeah, I have three roosters.
So, you know...
I'd be willing to put crow collars on them, but I, but I, the thing is, I mean, if somebody were to complain about them, I could absolutely rehome them. That's not a big deal, but they have lived here for like four years, and the only complaint that the township has ever received was from somebody on a personal note. And like I said, every, every single person that lives from here to the end of the block the one way, and here to the end of the block the other way, has, has shown their, you know, support in doing this. And, you know, nobody's bothered by the roosters. I lock them up until like, usually like eight thirty, nine o'clock in the morning. I lock them up, um, until like, usually like eight-thirty, nine o'clock in the morning, so that they're not a nuisance. The shed that they live in has tinted windows so that they don't see the light. And, um, if they don't see the light, they won't crow, so.
I mean, I guess my question, I'm sorry, Charlie, for interrupting. I guess, Matt, you have not gotten any complaints from the immediate neighbors regarding the roosters making noise at, you know, some hours in the morning?
No.
No, I, I haven't. And, uh, like the applicant said, four years that some of the roosters have been there. I've been here four years and I, if it was bothering somebody, I think I would have heard about it.
I would think so too. That's, I just wanted to put that on the record, that's all.
Okay.
And then, uh, the eggs, it's, yeah, if there are any eggs, it's for your own personal use, you're not inviting people in.
Yeah, honestly, my chickens eat their own eggs, so that's, that's a problem. So, um.
But you're not selling them, like people aren't coming, people aren't coming to your house to buy eggs from you? So you don't have cars coming in and out or anything like that?
No, no, if I ever have extra, I've offered them to the neighbors for free, um, just because obviously, you know, I have roosters, you know, I want to be, I want to be neighborly. And, um, you know, that's really the only, the only time I ever give anybody eggs, but I would never charge them for it. They're my neighbors, so.
Okay.
And then if you could just provide a real brief overview of your, you know, maintenance with like, uh, you know, uh, waste and things like that. I think you provided pretty detailed, you've been in correspondence with like Yukon and things like that. And then also you said you reached out to Board of Health and they've given their blessing. You're following all, you know, uh, recommendations and, and things like that, correct?
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, so we have, um, they have sand right now inside the coop. Um, that I find really cuts down on, um, the odors and stuff like that. And I have basically like a shovel that like, I can sift it out, like a, like a cat litter box. All their waste goes into, you know, a separate garbage and is disposed of, you know, in a, you know, that, you know, the heavy-duty trash bags and stuff. Um, it's, everything's, you know, bleached out. I do, um, you know, I use Pine-Sol inside the run, which is, you know, safe. And, um, I also have a veterinarian come out twice a year and just do a flock checkup. We do, uh, annual, or bi-annually dewormings on them. Um, anytime anybody, you know, has anything wrong with them, I have my vet out there. She's, um, she's actually in here also, which she can give testimony, um, to the care of the chickens. And, I mean, they're, they're taken care of probably better than most people's dogs and cats, so.
And then, Mr. Chair, the only con, other comment that I have is anytime we get a land use application, we look at the whole property. So there is a drainage easement on the side of property, uh, the stream that passes through there goes to a head wall. I think obviously when this whole subdivision was built, you know, thirty, forty years ago, it, it looks like it's just an error. When the subdivision was built, you know, that head wall obviously should be within the easement. Um, you know, the board is typically required in matters like this, you know, applicants to grant the, um, you know, the township an easement so they can maintain it and things like that. Um, you know, that would be a particular burden on, I think, the applicant in this case, given the scope of what they're proposing. I would just say, you know, if the applicant can put on record that they're amenable to granting, you know, the board an easement at some time in the future, should the board request, or should the township request it, I think that might be, uh, you know, a, a simpler route to get the same, uh, effect. Uh, like I said, this is, you know, we're talking about a chicken coop, uh, on a property, you know, not significant, uh, you know, uh, buildings and structures. I think that's, might be a little bit of a, a burden on the applicant to, to, to get lawyers and surveyors and things.
Yeah, it, it sounded like it was going to be a very expensive endeavor to put up a retaining wall for that, and I don't really see any drainage, um.
But we're not asking you to do that. We're.
Okay.
There, there's a head wall on the front of your property there, to the side there, the concrete head wall. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all part of your property. What, what Charlie is asking, just a verbal agreement, it, it's some date, if the township needs to go in and do a repair to that.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Y'all would grant them an access easement to get in.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Mister, do you have a problem with that, Mr. Mizachi?
I do not.
Okay. Does that satisfy you, Charlie?
Yes, that's, that's acceptable.
Okay. Okay, Jen, do you have any further?
I, I really don't. I just have a couple of questions and they're very general. So, given the fact that your lot is a hundred and fifty-five in the back, but only a hundred and thirty in the front, and technically you need seventy-five feet, so would you consider strict compliance with the ordinance a hardship, correct? Just say yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, um, so, but you are, you are attempting to conform to the best you can by providing fifty-five feet on either side, correct?
Correct.
So, would you consider this, would you consider eh, this creating any negative impacts to the zone plan or zone ordinance?
No.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
Welcome.
Before you go any further, there is a report in the exhibits from the Board of Health that says, provided best management practices are followed to control odors, discourage rodents and avoid waste runoff into the nearby stream, this department has no objection to this application.
Okay.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Okay. Charlie, you done?
Yep, nothing further.
Okay, board members, Mr. O'Donnell, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Uh, how big is that temporary structure?
Um, so. So the shed is, what is it, eight by eight, Damian?
Seven, seven by seven, looks like.
Okay, and then, so all, it, so it should be all together, it should be forty-five feet? Damian, do you know the, um, the measurements?
Ten feet.
Based upon, Mr. O'Donnell, based upon the plans, I don't need to step, I don't need to step in here. I, but the shed itself, like the structure is seven by seven. And then the run that's kind of, I guess, attached to the structure is forty-five by ten.
Yes, you're, you're correct.
So that's what the plan shows. Pardon?
Is the run enclosed or it's in, like a?
It's outside.
It's outside?
Yeah.
And it's fenced in?
Correct.
Okay, how many?
It's basically a big dog run.
Okay. And how many chickens do you have?
So right now, we have, uh, fourteen chickens or fourteen hens, two turkeys and three roosters.
Okay, and.
We're sorry.
Do you have any plans of enlarging the, uh?
No.
Chickens?
No, no, it's actually, sorry, it's nine hens, three roosters and two turkeys. That's what I have. I don't, I don't plan on getting any more, no.
And no more roosters?
No.
Okay, um. Oh, and, uh, you're not planning on doing any retail sales?
No.
Just to give to your neighbors and for yourself, whatever?
Yeah, it's really, honestly, they're, they're my pets more than anything. I don't even, I, I can't even tell you the last time I ate an egg.
That's fine.
All this because I love my pets.
I just wouldn't want to see it to turn into retail, you know, in the future down the road. But, but that's all the questions I have and, and I don't have any problem with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
I just want to say it's pretty cool. Uh, I'm glad these folks live in Howell and thank you for, thank you for doing this. It's very, uh, interesting.
Thank you. We rescue, we rescue a lot of them from Lakewood, from Kaporos. They, um, they're part of religious sac, uh, sacrifices. So they, uh, they, you know, they come to us and they've never even been on grass before. These chickens have swings, they have toys, they, I'm, I make like, I make all kinds of things for these chickens. They, they live really good lives here, so.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Martin, you are on the, you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, got you.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was going to ask the same things Mr. O'Donnell asked. And, you know, I also applaud her for what she's doing. And it's a shame that somebody who doesn't even live in the neighborhood would even bring it, bring us here tonight, but.
Costs us a lot of money.
But I have no issues, so, um, that's all I have to ask or say.
Thank you.
Mr. Moretti?
No questions, I'm.
Okay, Mr. Roscoe?
Oh, no question.
Mr. Hughes?
Nope, being an animal lover, I, I find it very cool too, and I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open to public. Do I have a motion to open to public?
Don't move.
I'll second that.
Who moved that?
Mr. Cantor.
Mr. Cantor is seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we're going to open to public. Please raise your hand and Eileen will, Eileen and Matt will bring you forward.
If anyone has any comments or questions on this application, please use the raise your hand feature and the moderator will bring you into the meeting. Mr. Corny, do you have any questions on this application?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. We're not seeing anyone raising their hand on this application.
I have a motion to close to public.
I make a motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. Sorry. Mr. Roscoe. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, see you none. Okay, Jen, do you have any final comments?
No, I, I don't have any other, uh, information. I think that the applicant has provided adequate testimony and I would have no problem if the board were to act favorably on the application.
Charlie, do you have any further?
Nothing further. I concur with what Jen just, uh, stated.
Well, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a, uh, motion to approve this application and every, based on everything we discussed. And the only thing I would say for me, keep painting those windows black so the roosters don't howl in the morning. That's it.
Okay. Okay, motion by Mr. O'Donnell, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second the application. I to agree to all the testimony. I have no issue with this. The biggest issue I would have had, there was an issue with the neighbors, but it sounds like her neighbors are on board and appreciate what the, this applicant's doing and I vote yes as well.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Mertens. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely. And again, I, I'll reiterate what my board members have said. I really love having people in this township doing what you're doing. I too raise animals myself.
Thank you.
It's a, it, it's a pleasure and it, it, it just lightens my heart to hear people doing it. Thank you. Okay, good luck with that, your motion carried and good luck with your chickens.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, I gotta find my agenda here.
Is there, is there, um, an inspection that I have to do or anything?
Matt?
We'll wait for the resolutions to come out, probably the next meeting or the one after, not to put pressure on you, Ron.
Mr. Trump.
We'll be in contact. Uh, I know, we'll, um, we'll take a look at everything at that point and most likely just close out the violation and be done.
Okay.
Okay. You will have to probably record the resolution or you have to at least do a notice in the paper again, but I'll send you all the information.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You too.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, moving forward, case number BA twenty-one oh four. VESI twenty-four LLC to use variants preliminary and final major site plan application of VESI twenty-four LLC is applicant and Howell Solar LLC is owner seeking use variants in preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of three lithium ion battery storage units, VESS at the rear of the existing solar array system on premises known as Block forty-two, Lot thirty-six, eight-twenty-nine Lakewood Farmingdale Road. Expiration date, December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Okay. Who's our attorney on this?
Mr. Yaskin, you can proceed.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Robano. Um, good evening, everybody. My name is Neil Yaskin. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cullen and Dykman in Princeton, New Jersey. This is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of a battery energy storage system, uh, commonly known as a BES uh, and related equipment to be constructed on a concrete pad at the rear of an existing solar facility at the address and, uh, lot and block that was just described to you, that's eight-twenty-nine Lakewood Farmingdale Road. The applicant is VESI, VESI twenty-four LLC. VESI twenty-four is affiliated with a company based in Philadelphia called Veridity Energy, which is a smart grid company that constructs systems for, um, basically smoothing out the, uh, flow to and from the electric grid. And you'll hear testimony tonight from somebody who understands that better than I do. Um, this is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval with two use variances, two D variances. One is for the installation of two principal uses on the same property. There is already an approximately fifty-acre solar facility on this property that was approved by this board in two thousand and eleven. And then the installation of a public utility in the ARE six zone. Uh, best facilities are classified as public utilities. I provided Ms. Robana with the notices required by the municipal land use law. I provided them to her on Friday and updated that today with one additional green card we received. And I would ask the board to take jurisdiction at this time.
Thank you, um, Mr. Yaskin, uh, the board will accept jurisdiction at this time. There is one caveat that I'd like to place on the record. The application initially that you referred to in two thousand and eleven was before the planning board.
I apologize.
Board, and of course, tonight, you're before the board for the relief that you've, uh, placed on the record.
Right. Thank you for that clarification and you're right, solar, um, arrays are a conditional, conditionally approved use in all zones, I believe in Howell, which is why it was in front of the planning board. Um, I have two witnesses tonight, um, and then a third if need be. My first witness is Chris Nussar, who's a professional engineer and professional planner with engineering and land planning. Uh, Mr. Nussar prepared the civil site engineering documents for this, uh, site. He will testify with respect to all of the, uh, site engineering issues. And then what I'd like to do, hopefully do, is go through, um, Mr. Cunliffe's July fifteenth comment letter. And then, um, Mr. Nussar will also give testimony as to the D variance relief, as he is a licensed planner. The other witness is David.
All of the witnesses in, uh, real quick, if you don't mind?
No, I don't mind.
Let, let's swear everybody in.
So, Mr. Yaskin, we have, uh, Chris Nussar and you were about to give us the name of the other witness.
Yes, David Corny, who's an electrical engineer and an expert in electrical engineering with Veridity Engineering. C-A-R-N-E-Y.
Very good. I'm not sure I can see Mr. Carney, but Mr. Carney, can you hear me? Is Mr. Carney on?
That's a good question.
I see his name down at the bottom.
He's on the phone, I believe.
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Carney and Mr. Nussar, although I cannot see either of you at this point, please raise your right hand. I'll assume your hands are raised for the purposes of an oath. Do you swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
Yep.
I do.
Thank you. And Mr. Nussar, please state your name for the record.
Christopher Nussar, N-U-S-S-E-R, with Engineering and Land Planning Associates, 140 West Main Street, Hybridge, New Jersey.
Very well. And Mr. Carney, please.
My name is David Michael Carney. I reside at 1801 Market Street, Suite 2701 in Philadelphia.
Very well. All sworn, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, sir. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Do, does the board have any questions before we begin with the witnesses?
Charlie, I, I don't think the board members are going to have questions at this time, but, you know. Charlie?
So, Mr. Chair, I would say I think it would be helpful for Mr. Nussar to kind of just go through and explain the site plan, what currently exists on the site with the solar facility, you know, how the, the new battery charging station is accessed, just general orientation of that in relation to Lakewood Farmingdale Road and the solar array system. And then, like Mr. Yoskin noted, if they want to go in and touch on my review letter, and I can jump in as needed with additional questions, I think that would be the way to approach this.
That's fine, and that's how we were going to approach it anyway.
Okay.
So, Mr. Nussar, with that as a backdrop, would you pick up on what Mr. Cunliffe said? Describe the existing conditions and the proposed conditions.
Certainly.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I need to qualify you as an expert. For the benefit of the board, would you briefly tell the board your educational and professional background?
Certainly. I have a Bachelor's of Science from Rutgers University in Civil Engineering. I am a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. Both licenses are in good standing. I've appeared before over 50 boards in, in those capacities and been accepted as an expert.
Mr. Chair, we would offer Mr. Nussar as an expert in civil engineering?
Okay, now, would you be test, testify just strictly engineering?
No, he will be testifying, I'm sorry, and in planning. He will be testifying in both disciplines.
Jennifer?
So typically, we do not accept PEs who have their planning license for use variance applications, those that do not have AICP. But, Mr. Chair, this, while while I'm not disagreeing that it's, I mean, I guess we'll hear that this is multiple principal uses on a single lot. This is a very modest variance, in my opinion, so I think we can listen to the testimony, and if we feel that we don't have enough on the planning front, we can go from there. But I think, given the minor nature of the application, we probably should be able to proceed. But, Mr. Yoskin, I do, I do want to just note for the record that we typically do not accept engineers with a planning license for a use variance application. So, you know, for whatever that counts for moving forward, if you come back for another use variance at another time, just be aware that they don't typically accept it.
I'm not nearly as offended as Chris probably is, but in fact, I'm not offended at all.
That's not, that's not the worst thing that's ever been thrown at me. I've been called a mail-in planner before, so I'm, I'm good.
Aye.
All right. So with that, with that clarification and understanding, Chris, if you could proceed, and also, Mr. Chair, we're going to be introducing two exhibits. Mr. Nussar's going to be doing that.
Can I interrupt just a second? I need to ask my counsel a question. Mr. Toffley, is this going to kind of impede on the board's record as far as planning, testimony?
Not at all, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Jennifer. This is a relatively modest proposal. This is not, for example, a full bore use variance. You know, that we already have a use on site. This is a, as I see it, a modest expansion of sorts. And I'm certainly no planner, but I think, given the technical nature of this application, that perhaps it would be best to have Mr. Nussar's insight as a planner that could possibly knit the entire application together, perhaps even far better, if we had an individual planner working the case. So, I for one don't see a problem. I concur with Jen's reasoning. And again, normally, we do want to see, you know, a certified planner, but be that as it may, I don't see any problem, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I, I just wanted that placed on the record.
I mean, as Jen, and as Jen said, if for some reason you feel you need more persuasive planning proofs, then we can deal with it at some future date in the application. But let's hear the testimony first.
I appreciate it. And I will tell the board that this is the second such application that this team has presented. And the other application was in Green Township in Sussex County, and the board and its professionals accepted Mr. Nussar's testimony. So, again, Chris, maybe we should begin with you introducing the two exhibits, and we can have those marked.
Certainly. So, Eileen, I, I did not email these to you, but I will email them to you after the meeting tonight. You're on mute, sorry.
Are these the exhibits that Brian Smith emailed to me earlier today?
No, these are separate.
They're not.
Oh, okay. Then I don't have these, so you're going to have to put them up if you can.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll put them up, and then I will, like I said, I will email them to you.
And then we'll lay a foundation for them as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, if everybody can see this one. So, we're just going to start with A1, or you mark parts of the package?
We've already marked several, so this is going to be A16.
A16, okay, very good. So, A16 is titled VESI 24 Overall Site Exhibit. This is a aerial photograph with the, the property boundaries, the regulated buffers, and the proposed improvements overlaid upon them. The proposed improvements are color rendered. And again, they reflect what was submitted to the board in the site plan package.
You kind of zoom that out, you know, so we can see that a little clearer.
I'm sorry. Zoom.
Zoom in.
I think if you, if you pinch it on your screens.
Do you mean where we're proposing?
Yeah, just, just.
Okay. Yeah, so we have a second application, or application, exhibit.
Okay.
Let me switch to that. Where did? Did I lose my controls? No, there it is. You know, let me just share this screen as opposed to the piece. So here is a second exhibit, which is just titled VESI 24 Site Exhibit. I should note, both of these are dated with today's date and were prepared by my office, so this would be A17. And this is a more zoomed-in view of the area of the improvements, specifically in the rear of the site.
Okay, now, the driveway entry, the facility here, that's going to be that gravel drive that, that
This here?
Heading northwest or west?
This right here, yes. This is, yes, that's proposed.
Okay, now, how is that tying into the facility? Is there any existing roadway coming in there?
Yeah, there's an, there's an existing road that goes and actually leads to the rear of the site. Let me go back to, it's not terribly clear on this one. Because I don't think it was full, this is, I should say, the aerial photograph that's here is an under-construction photo.
Right.
Because of the time that this was taken, so we don't have all the finished improvements. And one of those improvements that's missing is the location of the ultimate interconnection point, which is actually off property to the east.
Chris, could you go back to A17, and there was a label for the existing?
Yes, there's an existing dirt drive.
Yeah.
At, there's a gate in the fence, so the, the main access drive coming through the solar facility, there's a gate that gets you onto this existing dirt drive, and then you would access in from there.
Okay, now, do you have any plans on putting gravel where you could gain access on that dirt drive? Because that, that's not going to handle any fire equipment or anything that's going to come in here.
It's a fairly compacted surface, and we had not anticipated putting gravel down on it to further stabilize it.
Okay, I'm going to let you address that.
I believe that the Fire Safety Bureau has signed off on this. Eileen, is that correct?
No, one second.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just chime in, and I think it might add some clarity to it. So, it's an existing dirt driveway. It's like nine feet wide, at least, maybe varying with a little bit greater, as what's shown on the applicant's plan. Typically, the Fire Bureau for access purposes requires that it needs to be able to support a fire truck, and, you know, be 20 feet wide and have like 14 feet of vertical clearance and things like that. Maybe, I don't know, if there's someone here from Veridity, or Chris can provide some testimony on his understanding of the applicant's, you know, how, how often people are going back there to access it for, like, maintenance purposes. And then also, I believe, those units back there have their own fire suppression system. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, and Mr. Carney's going to give us some testimony on that when, when he comes up as well. And, and from a maintenance perspective, yeah, it's, it, this is very similar to the solar facility. It's very limited maintenance. Again, this is maybe stepping a little bit on, on Dave's toes, but the system is remotely monitored from Veridity's headquarters in, in Philly. They have their own monitoring system and services to keep track of it. If there's issues, they send somebody out to, to check on it. But generally speaking, it's a very low-intensity use as far as traffic's concerned.
Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt, the Fire Bureau did submit a report, and they said they've reviewed the project as described. We have no objections to the proposed project and no additional comments. That's marked as Exhibit B4 in the package.
Okay, that answers my question. Okay, you, you may continue, sir.
Thank you. So I'm going to switch back here to A16, the overall site exhibit. So again, this is on Lakewood Farmingdale Road. It's a 74-acre lot in your ARE 6 zone. It's currently developed as a solar farm, as you can all see very clearly on the aerial. The solar farm had been approved in two phases. The first phase is what ultimately got constructed. The second phase has not been constructed and will not be constructed. The, the limitation of that was the Phase 1 portion generally consisted of all the areas that were outside of any regulated feature. The Phase 2 portion of it was located within various regulated areas, regulated by the DEP, whether they be wetlands, or riparian buffers, flood plains, et cetera. The site is, again, constrained by a couple of different things along the southern border, and then going kind of northeast, as I'm indicating here, perpendicular to the rear property line. There is a drainage feature that is, that is a regulated stream, which goes underneath that dirt road. There's a pipe that brings it underneath and drops into the tributary that runs to the north of the site. Those all have a 300-foot riparian buffer that extend from them. There's also a number of wetland features throughout the site that are indicated on the plans. There's some areas generally to the north and to the east, and then there's a small area here along, along the county road that, that is also regulated. The proposal before you tonight does not involve any permits for wetlands. There's no impacts to any wetlands or wetland transition areas. We are proposing work within the riparian buffer. As part of that, we've made a submission to the NJDEP for a flood hazard area individual permit, which is under their review at this time. They're reviewing for both the impacts to the riparian buffer as well as reviewing the stormwater management on the facility, since it is a major project and subject to their review. The, the solar facility, again, because this, I am correct, this board did not see this application, right? It was the planning board?
That's correct.
Okay. So the solar facility connects to the electrical grid, which runs to the east of the site. You can see the transmission lines. There's both larger transmission lines and some subtransmission, subtransmission lines running to the east of that, which are a little less visible. The solar facility connects to the electrical grid in that location, not on the county road, but again, off to the east here. When they installed their interconnection to get to the rear, they did a underground drilling of the conduit, and there's a spare conduit there. So the intention of this application is to use that underground conduit that exists, the spare one, and to interconnect in the same manner and path as the solar facility. Going to A17, this is a fairly, fairly straightforward, yet in some, in some ways more for Mr. Carney, complex application. From a, from a site design standpoint, it's pretty straightforward. We have a gravel access drive, as we've already talked about, coming off the existing dirt drive. It comes into a fenced enclosure, which is this boxed area. It abuts to the solar facility's fence. In the center of that is a concrete pad, and upon that is the electrical equipment. There are also basically control boxes, which again, I don't want to step on Mr. Carney's toes too much, but there are, there's safety and control equipment that's located to the north of the concrete pad. Around the concrete pad and inside the limits of the fence is a, just a gravel surface. That gravel surface will double as our stormwater management measures. How we will collect stormwater right at the, the source of it and infiltrate it into the subsurface. The, the intention of that is to minimize the amount of disturbance within the riparian buffer in this area. The this area in particular has a lot of just volunteer growth, scrub growth. Again, this had all been previously cleared prior to the solar facility's construction. And so there's a lot of invasive growth within the area that as part of the DEP application will end up being cleared and replaced with some more native vegetation, improving that riparian buffer. There will be some lighting proposed, really as a security measure around the facility. Lights, one on the west and one on the east side, again, just, just providing a measure of security. Since this is in a fairly isolated spot, it wouldn't impact any Uh, since this is in a fairly isolated spot, um, it wouldn't impact any neighboring property. Oh, there'd be no light trespass. And again, switching back to A sixteen. You can see the location of this is very hidden and tucked away from any neighboring residents. Uh, the nearest property line is to the northeast. And again, that area has the tributary within it, along with all the wetland complexes that go with it. And therefore, there's no potential for development in the immediate proximity to that pro- property line. You have a floodplain, repair, three hundred foot riparian buffers, uh, wetlands and wetland transition areas from that. Uh, so, again, to the east, there's, there's no residential development there either. We just have the, uh, the electrical power lines. Nearest property that's residential is to the south. Uh, quite frankly, the nearest property owner is right along the county road, as I'm indicating here. Um, all the way in the, uh, called western corner of the property. We've done a, there's been a study that, uh, Verity has performed for the site. Or had commissioned for the site as far as noise impacts are concerned. The result of that was there was no negative impacts or any impacts on any surrounding residences. Uh, by the proposed facility and any noise from it.
Chris, you, you said you guys had a, a noise study done? Can you provide a copy of that for the boards?
Yes, yes, and we, we, uh, that was one of the documents that, uh, Brian had sent to Eileen earlier.
We, we have an excerpt, yeah, we have an excerpt from that, which Mr. Comes, Mr. Carney will, uh, explain. And then we, we'll make sure that you get a full study, copy of the full study.
Uh, and then I think one of the other concerns, obviously, with a facility like this, were really any, any, um. Utility facility in a, in a residential zone is, again, buffering, uh, from neighboring properties, from neighboring residences. Again, we just talked about noise and light, same for them. From a visual standpoint, this is tucked deep into this lot. With no visibility from the road, from any, anybody driving by. Uh, there is no visibility from any of the adjacent residences from this facility. Again, because we're tucked into the rear here, uh, there is existing vegetation. That is along the property lines, uh, that helps buffer along with the solar facility itself that's there. That's going to be in front of it. The system itself, the maximum height is fourteen and a half feet. Uh, where the solar facility is somewhere around ten feet at its maximum height. So it's slightly taller, but given the relief on the property, um, the solar facility is gonna far screen the, uh.
Speak right now. So can I just interject when we're talking about buffers?
Yeah.
So the property to your north is zone residential, correct? ARE six?
Yeah.
So you're required to have a fifty-foot perimeter buffer. And, and the setbacks are measured off that buffer. And while your facility itself seems to be set back a decent away, that gravel driveway is not. And is there a reason why you can't move that facility so that your entirety, like the entirety of your enclosure is outside that fifty feet?
You mean including the, the gravel?
We don't allow anything. You're not even allowed to grade in the fifty feet. So your driveway in the fifty feet is in the buffer. Is there a reason why you can't move it out?
Yeah, I mean, access to the facility, because the solar facility is already there. Um, the gate that comes out, the, out of the rear comes on to that dirt drive, which does exist.
I understand that, but I'm looking at your plan that's on the screen right now. And you can see very clearly that the solar facility is set back off that property line, and you are well beyond that. So again, I ask, can you move the facility back outside the buffer? Like, they were not here for a use variance, you are. So their burden was not the same as your burden. So, again, you know, it's a gigantic site. I don't really see any reason why we should grant relief of that buffer, honestly.
Well, now, the existing underground conduit that we are using to connect is located. Right next to the facility here. So if we relocate the facility itself further away.
The facility itself is fine, but your access drive into it is not. So is there a way, I, I mean, we can go around and around, but you need relief from that buffer. And quite frankly, the site is gigantic. And I, you know, this goes back to you not bringing the actual planner with you. So you're gonna have to justify it, and as far as I'm concerned, you're gonna have a hard time. So.
Before, before we get to, before we get to the planning issues, let me ask Mr. Nussler from a engineering perspective. Um, why we are tied to that, there's, there's a gate in the back of that, uh, the solar facility. I think if we did what Jennifer is suggesting, you would have to have vehicular access inside the solar facility. And I guess I have a couple of questions. One is that physically, um, possible? And number two, do you know if the owner of the property is amenable to that? And number three, is that even permissible from a BPU perspective?
So I don't know the owner's opinion of, of relocating the fence or adjusting the fence to providing access from a different location. Uh, again, I, I will say, the existing infrastructure is there as far as the access road. Uh, we're simply connecting to it. I understand that we are within the buffer in that area with the gravel drive.
Yep.
It is a. Surface improvement, uh, that's not projecting upwards. That's immediately adjacent to an area that's highly restricted from any development by DEP restrictions. So while there's not a fifty-foot buffer necessarily provided to that property line. Um, I'm gonna zoom in here.
Hi.
So, uh, if I could just chime in on that too, and I just wanna, you know, Jen brings up a good point. Obviously, our ordinance, uh, um, doesn't require any like grading and stormwater management within the fifty-foot buffer. So the driveway, you are proposing like an underground gravel infiltration, uh, you know, basin underneath that. Uh, so technically, that would classify as a stormwater management infrastructure within that buffer. I think, um, you know, obviously, right now, the cleanest thing is how your site is laid out. That's an existing drive while you're trying to pull off of that. But is there a way to avoid the buffer, you know, um, and come straight into the back of the site and not go through the buffer is, is the big, is the big.
I, I agree. I mean, you already have to drive through ninety-nine percent of the solar array to get to that gated area as it is. So I, you know, I, I'm unconvinced with the testimony that there's not an alternative that doesn't require development in the buffer. And let, you know, a- as we stated, you are here for a use variance as well. So if there's no physical way to do it, then maybe the site's not particularly suited for this particular application. So I would strongly encourage you to relook at that, because as far as I'm concerned, there's really not a lot of justification to encroach into that buffer area. And if you look at the solar array, and I was there when that got approved on the planning board, I was the professional that was there. And there's a reason that the solar array jogs the way that the property line is jogging. And, and that's to keep the development fifty feet from that property line. So while there's no development there, there now, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's gonna be the circumstance in the future. So, you know, I, as I said earlier, and of course, it's up to the board to decide how they want to move forward. But as far as I'm concerned, something that's this small on a site that's this large, there has to be a better way. That doesn't require us to, that doesn't require us to, to grant relief from a, from a ordinance standard that we have held applicants on much tighter pieces of property to.
Let me make this suggestion. Um, this is Mr. Yaskin. I'm looking at the site plan, sheet four of nine, and it, it shows this area in greater detail. It looks to me, Chris, could you scale off? The length of driveway that's in the fifty-foot buffer? It looks like it's about forty feet.
Uh, the, so zooming in here, I mean, the, the existing dirt drive is about nine feet wide. Uh, and it's. Probably one and a half times that off the, the property line. So you're looking at being, call it twenty-five.
Okay.
Call it twenty-three feet, somewhere, somewhere around there, so about halfway.
I mean, where I'm going with this is, we, we can look at what Jennifer is asking. But if you could go down to the, to the, a little below that, where the word proposed access driveway. And then actually where the word connect to existing fence, is that a structure there?
Yeah.
That rectangle?
Yeah, that's part of the solar facility's electrical equipment.
Alright, so the, if the driveway would either have to go behind that, between that equipment and the solar array. Or it would have to go in that vegetated buffer to stay out of the fifty feet?
Yes, it can't, yeah, it wouldn't be able to come straight into the, the site. You wouldn't be able to get, I mean, in this case, we can bring emergency equipment around into the site. Um, we could bring it through in this area, uh, most likely. But it's fairly tight on the backside, and then you have to try and swing yourself into.
But that's a direct result of where you've laid out your project. I mean, you know, like, you're making it like this is here, and we're trying to figure out the best way to get back there. I didn't propose your project at this location. You need to comply with our ordinances i- to the best you can. And to be perfectly honest, because it's easier, it's not justification, in my opinion. So you're gonna have to figure out a way to get this in there without going into that buffer. You have a gigantic piece of property here, you're already coming through the entirety of the solar array to the last, what, twenty-five feet or so? So, I mean, listen, I, I, I get, I get that I sound like a broken record. But this is a, this is an ordinance that this board has upheld on properties that have a lot greater hurdles to overcome than this. And we've held this, there, there's really no reason why you can't figure out a way to, to, to get around it. I get that it's not the easiest solution, but that's co- quite frankly, not our responsibility. But like, you have really no legitimate planning justification for the encroachment, other than it's the easiest way. And as far as I'm concerned, that's not planning justification.
Well, we will take your comments under advisement. I, I'm not sure I agree with you, because you've actually haven't even heard some of the planning. You haven't heard the full testimony and why it's there. But, uh, you've, you've cut Mr. Nussler off. But I think, um, you seem pretty adamant about it. So I think the better thing to do is, we will discuss it, uh, internally, and, uh, then we will reach back out to you.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that, because I, I know as far as the buffers on use variances, this board is very tough on it. Me, if that was a farmland buffer, it, it wouldn't get approved. I have never, in my twenty years on the board, ever granted a farmland enclosure. I have never voted for it. And I, I think, I agree with Jennifer, this is hard, you know, it, it's hard to go around the buffers. Especially at our zoning board, so, you know, that, that's, I think you really do need to look at. Even if you have to cut off. Part of your drive there, and I, I understand, you know, it has to do, deal with the infiltration. But you might have to relook at that.
Well, it doesn't have as much to do with the infiltration as the difficulty of accessing, um, the, where, where this, we'd like this to go. Through the solar array.
Yeah, I understand, but, but the thing about it is, you gotta dirt, act dirt drive now. Why can't you keep a dirt drive coming into it? You know, that, that's the whole thing. You know, if you got a dirt drive there, and it's, that dirt drive is gonna be adequate to service this facility to get to there. Why, why can't that?
Well, let me ask then, let me ask that question of Mr. Nussler. Chris, could you have that length of driveway that's in the buffer just be dirt?
Yeah, I don't see why it wouldn't be just as satisfactory as the, the other existing dirt drive. The infiltration that, that driveway provides is for the driveway itself. So it's providing stormwater management for itself, is what it's doing. Um, so if we're reducing that driveway, we're reducing the need for the stormwater. And it's just gonna be, it would just be dirt.
Would that be acceptable to the board?
That, that's up to my professionals. You know, they, that's gonna be totally up to the professionals. If it was, you know, you, you're telling me that the dirt driveway is gonna be adequate enough to handle the vehicular traffic going in here. You know, I have to leave that up to my professionals to agree with.
So what I'll say, Mr. Chair, is it's still a disturbance within the buffer, regard, you know, it's still a driveway. Regardless of what the surface is, does it eliminate the relief for stormwater management, you know, infrastructure being within the buffer? Yeah, that's probably the case. Um, but it still technically needs relief for the driveway itself, even if it's, regardless of what the materials. Cause right now, looking at the aerial, you know, it's grass and some, you know, minor ground cover vegetation. So, you know, it's still disturbance within, within the buffer.
They still need a, they still need a variance for the buffer.
Yeah, and then I just wanna point it out as a item of clarity. So there is some exceptions for like the main site driveway to a site, um, you know, within the buffers. But I don't know that that necessarily applies to this, because, you know, that's for like the main site access from a public right of way. Not from, you know, some internal access drive, you know, for a different use on the site. So, um, I, I wouldn't say, and Jen can, can, can correct me if I'm wrong, that I wouldn't say that it really applies, you know, to this, to this circumstance. So I think they, obviously, regardless of what the cover is, you know, buffer relief is required. Um, if I could just jump in and ask some questions to, um, Mr. Nussler. Um, you know, regarding the stormwater management and some of the, the, uh, environmental, um, concerns with the application. So I think, Chris, you said you guys aren't disturbing any wetlands or transition areas. But you guys actually did make a application to DEP for LOI, just to update, because I think the stuff for the original application has expired?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and then you're asking for a hardship exemption from DEP for the three hundred foot repairing? So the entirety of your development is within that repairing, three hundred foot repairing zone, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, and then as far as your stormwater management, so, uh, from looking at it at the surface, it doesn't look like any stormwater management is provided. Can you put some more testimony or, or some detail on exactly where it is in the site and some of the things, you know? Just testimony on that would, I'll, I'll have some questions on top of that.
Sure. So the, the facility as it's currently proposed, um, on sheet five of nine now. Um, there is this box hatched area, both on the entry drive. And on the, um, eastern side of the, uh, of the facility. And what that is, is basically a gravel infiltration basin. The, it's a extended section of gravel, uh, as opposed to your, your standard, uh, profile. It's an open graded stone of, of an increased depth. Again, to store and manage and infiltrate the, um, the required storms.
So, and then you have had some correspondence with DEP regarding, so my understanding, uh, generally is any type of surface that, uh, has vehicular traffic and that drains to an infiltration BMP, you know, has to meet, um, you know, TSS removal and things like that. And, um, you, you've had some correspondence, I think, with DEP. Can you provide some testimony on that?
Sure. Yeah, u- ultimately, if it's a, if it's an impervious surface, if it was a DGA, some sort of, um, blended stone. Not a, not a clean stone that we're proposing, or it was an asphalt surface. It would require TSS removal from it if it had vehicular traffic on it, no matter how infrequent. Uh, but this is, in, in their view, um, is, it is not that, and it doesn't require that treatment. Uh, and so the, the system. And so, the, the system, as it's, as it's proposed, the, the idea behind it is acceptable to them. We have had conversations with the department, and they provided that clarification to us that, you know, they, they do accept the method in which we're doing the, the underground infiltration basin, or, sorry, somewhat surface, kind of underground. Additionally, you know, there, there are some comments, both in your letter, and that they had provided to us, the very similar comments that we need to address, we understand we need to address, that involve us doing some additional soil testing to confirm the depth of groundwater and the precise location of the facility, because the information we're going off of is slightly further away. We hadn't done any tests in the exact area due to some constraints with getting access to that area and, and issues with utilities. Those since have been resolved, so we can, we can actually advance tests in the, you know, the, the area where we're proposing the facility and, and provide that information to you.
Chris, just following up on what Charlie's asking you, is, is the facility in the inner or the outer 150 feet of the riparian zone? And does that make a difference?
Yes, it's in the, the outer 150, and it does. The inner 150 is a far more restricted area of the buffer. And if we were within there, you know, I think the facility would have a, a hard time moving forward. Where it's located, again, we've met with the department before we made an application. Can we have an application pending and with them? And we've gotten all positive feedback on it so far.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just add on to that, and it's in my letter, one of the biggest concerns that I have is, you know, they, they have some soil logs, which I think Mr. Nussor and some correspondence that I've had with him has indicated was from the original site plan for the sole facility. You haven't done any soil logs for your proposed stormwater management infrastructure. Those soil logs for the original application show the water tables four feet down. They're proposing a gravel, you know, infiltration, we'll say recharge underneath the, the gravel parking area or circulation area on the concrete that goes down six feet. You know, stormwater regs require two foot of separation from the bottom of your stormwater management BMP to the water table. You know, I don't know where those other logs are. Certainly, they say four feet, so if you're at six feet, you're two foot into the water table. So that's obviously an issue. Could they, you know, make the whole entire gravel area infiltration? And, you know, decrease the depth of it? You know, that's a possibility. You know, if, if they can't, and they gotta make the site bigger, you know, that's obviously a concern for me, because, you know, the boards here are considering a use variance. And, you know, I think the scale of the development is, plays into the use. So I'm just a little concerned with, you know, that being an open-ended item with the stormwater management design, is there a potential impact that, you know, what we're looking at now, the board rules favorably on the use, you know, should DEP come up with additional comments or to the stormwater, you know, soil logs and infiltration, so it's, it's not really suitable for how it's currently proposed? You know, the scale of the development might increase, and it's, you know, not what was approved in the use. That's, that's one of the, a big concern that I have. I don't know if, you know, Chris can provide additional testimony to that. You said, I think you've indicated some additional soil logs, or you've got permission to do that? You know, have they been done? Have you, do you have the results back? Do you have any information to provide to us, at least verbally through testimony?
Yeah, the, the soil logs haven't been completed yet. So I, there's no additional information I can give you on it. And yes, I think that, you know, the, the natural conclusion to it is, is that we would increase the, the footprint of the facility, the extent of it, and if it needed to encompass the gravel, and, you know, all of the gravel surrounding the, the concrete pad, then that's what we would have to do for it. But I think at the end of the day, we'll have, we'll have sufficient area within the fence.
So, what I would just say, Mr. Chairman, and I think Jen might have a differing opinion on this with me, from an engineering perspective, as far as the site plan and the layout, you know, you know, would there be a need to increase the gravel and the footprints to provide additional stormwater management? You know, as long as they got their outside agency approvals, I wouldn't really take issue with it as far as the site, but I imagine Jen would take a differing opinion on that with regarding, you know, the use variance and whether the site is suitable. You know, I'll let her chime in on that. My recommendation would be, you know, if the board is seeking real favorably, maybe consider a use, you know, bifurcating with just the use, or a use in a preliminary with a final pending, you know, additional stormwater management design and things like that. My concern is just, you know, the board approves something, and then I get things during resolution compliance, and the site is significantly larger than what the board saw. You know, and then obviously, you know, they're coming back to the board again for a second time. I think it might just be, you know, used with preliminary, might be something, you know, more suited to this, this with the unknowns.
I, I would agree with Charlie. You know, I don't take exception off the top about increased gravel if that's necessary, but I do think that it's something that the board needs to, you know, assess before they grant final. And I do just wanna, just wanna state that while I agree that ultimately the riparian approvals lie with the DEP, we also have requirements within our ordinance for a riparian buffer, so any disturbance would be subject to relief from our ordinance, which I don't take any exception to, because ultimately, you know, how that works will lie with the DEP, but it's just an additional relief that would be necessary, because it's within the 300 feet, I guess, as was testified to before. So I agree with Charlie that, you know, at a very, at the very minimum, we should hold off on final if the board wants to act favorably on the application. That way, they can relook at perhaps disturbance in the buffer as well as whether or not any additional gravel area would be necessary for stormwater management before the board acts in its final capacity on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that would be a problem for the applicant.
Okay. Yeah, I was just getting ready to ask and see if you had any objection to that.
I've also been offline with my client, and we can explore the possibility of, rather than going through the existing gate at the rear of the fence and down the dirt road, we can explore staying inside the fence line and coming down between the switchgear housing, which is that rectangular area, and the solar array, and getting into the facility from there. But he's also questioning me not to make any guarantees in that regard.
Okay, that, that could be, you know, we could deal with the use at this point, and then come back for final. You know, once, once some of the unanswered questions are answered, then come back for the final.
I would ask your, I'd ask your counsel if that works for him.
Mr. Tropke?
Mr. Yoskin, there appears to be some loose ends to the application tonight. The question I have actually is also for our chair. I know that it's 10:22.
Yes.
I know there's operation testimony that needs to be put on the record. And I don't know how long the board wants to go this evening. I don't have a problem with the bifurcation aspect. I'm just wondering aloud if perhaps we should, because, you know, the applicant would have to come back for a final, in any event, whether it would not be something to consider to take a little more testimony tonight, give the applicant the opportunity to have the internal conversations and come back and wrap it up in one fell swoop. But I don't, I'm not fundamentally against a bifurcation. I've done that before, and this board has done that before. But I guess, Mr. Yoskin, that's more of a, of an observation and a question for your, and your professionals.
No, no, you answered, you answered my question. I think Mr. Mr. Carney's testimony will take considerable time. There are a lot of the questions in Mr. Conliffe's review letter went to how the facility operates, what it looks like, what are the fire risks, how often do vehicles visit there, which I can tell you is very rarely. But the last board we appeared before, they had a lot of questions about that. So if you're suggesting that, what I'd like to do is finish up with Mr. Nussor. Any questions that Mr. Conliffe has for him, and perhaps go through Mr. Conliffe's letter if necessary. And then we'll, sorry, there's a airplane outside. We will regroup and discuss internally what we've heard tonight, and we'll also line up Mr. Mr. Carney for next time. I mean, we have. Okay.
That sounds reasonable to me, but, Mr. Chairman, how long would the board be willing to stay? I assume it'll, and Charlie, how long do you think it would take?
I can just ask some, a couple of the, the big questions and comments that I have real quickly, and maybe spend 10 more minutes on it, and hopefully get through at least the engineering stuff. So, and then I guess a question for Chris. I mean, you know, in an ideal world, you know, you, you authorize someone to go out there to do soil test pits and, you know, wrap up the stormwater management design. I mean, that's something that's like, what, like 60 to 90 days out? For you, or is that like 30 to 60 days?
I, I think we're probably closer to the 30 to 60 day mark on that.
Okay. So I know our board is pretty slammed up with meeting dates. You know, it would be certainly, I think, board's preference, if, if there's any way possible for you to expedite, you know, your stormwater management design and get like a revised report and like a plan into us in advance of the next meeting, and then, you know, maybe that takes out, you know, the discussion on whether preliminary and final, and you're just coming and getting everything for one shot at the next meeting. Obviously, you know, COVID and other things may get in the way of, you know, that, that timetable, so.
Hey, Chris, before you answer that question, I'm, I'm a little confused, because you submitted a stormwater report as part of this application. And, you know, based on, on your work, it appeared, it works, but I guess there's this question of new soil logs.
Yeah, we need some additional testing to confirm depths of the water.
So I, I just will note that the, like, the first paragraph of my letter says, you know, I still have significant storm management concerns regarding the, the basin, and the big one is the, the depth of the water table. Like I said, you know, you're going down six feet with stone, and the water table's at four feet. So, you know, you're, you're two feet into the water table, and you're not also providing the two feet of separation from your infiltration BMP to the water table. So, you know, it's, it's not a small, you know, item that can be clarified as like a condition of an approval. It's something that's very big to the functioning of the stormwater men for, for the proposed application, so.
Well, and I agree with you that if it's gonna drive the size of the facility, we don't want to get a use variance, having minimized it as much as possible, and then have to come back and ask again.
So, just a couple of quick questions that I think I'll at least speed it through it. So you said, Chris, obviously, you're utilizing existing conduits, so other than your disturbance in the gravel on the site, you're not doing anything with trench or anything like that, right?
Right.
All right. And then the applicant, whatever the final determination on the location of where the gate and the access is from the sole facility, the applicant would have an issue with providing an OX, an OX box for fire access?
No.
Would there be any? The light intensity summary, so there isn't any provided on the plans, just from the book handle sweeps that are, that are shown there. It certainly looks like you're exceeding the maximum 0.5-foot candle average for, for like gravel and circulation areas that's permitted by our ordinance. You're gonna need a, a variance for that. It's something in common that the board has granted. I just want to know what the number is, you know, for that area. So it's, you know, clearly in, in any resolution of approval. I'd also ask that the lights be 3000 K, so they're not, you know, blue lights glaring up in a residential zone, near residential properties. As far as the lights, you said they're just for security purposes, so is there any way, obviously, can they be put on like a dimmer at nighttime? So they're very low, and then obviously, if someone has to come and do maintenance overnight, they turn back on? That wouldn't be an issue for you?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, ultimately, yeah, I mean, that, that would, that would be fine if we wanted to dim them down, as long as they're still providing for the, you know, security lighting that we're looking for them to provide.
Okay. And then as far as the, I had a bunch of environmental comments. A lot of it was like regarding status of the application with an LOI, and also, you know, repairing disturbance and things like that. Mr. Nussor provided testimony on the status of those. I would just say any approvals contingent on their approvals, and then providing a record of same for the board's record. As far as tree clearing, it's in an area of like scrub. There's not any trees in, in the vicinity of a proposed development. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then you also mentioned that this is in the vicinity of like the prior phase two approvals for the solar facility, so the applicant has no intention of constructing those, so they're abandoning the phase two approvals from the prior site plan, uh, planning board's site plan approval, correct?
That's my understanding is.
Okay. I think that's all I have from Mr. Nussor, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tropke, how do you want to move forward with this?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think, again, you know, I think at this point in time, it would appear that the applicant, I believe, will be returning to come back to complete the testimony, and then again, ask for the use variance preliminary and final in one shot. That's my understanding, Mr. Yoskin, and.
That's our, that's our preference. That's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, Eileen, or Mr. Yoskin, how much time do y'all need? I know the soil logs, 30 to 60 days, so.
It helps any, actually, my next date that's available is probably November 16th, which is two months.
Well, given what Chris said about the timing for the soil logs, Chris, do you think that we can have that back by then?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay.
And that, that's having all of the documentation and everything that we need as far as stormwater management. You know, you'll have an answer on moving the entrance gate down the facility at that time?
Yes. Yeah, well, both, both of those, those concerns. And the, the board's general standard is the normal 10 days prior?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, we'll try to get it in as early as we can. Don't want to put Charlie in a bind, trying to review on the short term, but, you know.
Well, you're, you're lucky to have communication with Charlie and Jen.
If you need more time, my next date after that would be November 30th. So it's up to you.
There's some, there's some issues relating to timing of interconnection agreements with utilities, which are a real constraint for us. Is there any possibility for a special meeting?
Those are actually special meetings. We've added extra Mondays to our calendar to try to clear up some of these cases.
What is going on in Howell Township?
The zoning board is swamped.
Well, anyway, I think that that's probably the way to proceed right now.
Which, which date, the 16th or the 30th?
Oh, the 16th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
November 16th.
So, and then, Mr. Chair, just along with the recent, just copy the noise impact statement report just would be helpful, and so we're not looking at it the night of the meeting. And then, like the chairman said, Chris, once you submit stuff to Eileen, you know, you can send me PDF copies through email, just try to expedite the review, and then don't hesitate from picking up the phone, give me a call, even if it's just an update on where you guys are, so the board knows what's going on.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to clarify one thing. We're, listen, I can, you know, we can see that this is an issue for the board, and we're fine with that. Hey, I don't want you to think by agreeing to push back till we see as more detailed results on stormwater management, we're agreeing that you have a right to postpone your ruling until DEP rules. I mean, we have a right to get an approval, subject to outside approvals, provided we've met your proof. met your proofs. Now, in this particular case, the issue of Mr. Conliffe's concerns regarding stormwater management happened to overlap with DEP's concerns, so we're okay with that, but I don't want you to think that, you know, we're just going to wait around so we get the DEP approval.
That's not what we're asking you to do.
I know, okay, that's good, because one of the problems, collective problems we have is the governor has suspended all of the 90-day permit limitations that DEP operates under.
Right.
So we're kind of held hostage to that.
Well, we're not requesting that, but the thing about it is, what we're trying to do is eliminate you from having to come back to the board. If they, say they want you to double your site, then we have a problem with that, you know, to.
We appreciate that, we agree with that.
And that's, that's all we're trying to eliminate. It's not going to eliminate, you know, we're bifurcated if we have to, you know, to get the use, we can bifurcate it until we know exactly, you know, what we're going to have as far as the size for the infiltration, or even if you have to go to a different type of infiltration. Whatever it is, that's not going to keep the board from voting on this.
No, I, I think we'll have a much better and much clearer picture by November 16th of where we are. By the way, it's a better picture than, has anybody told you that all we can see of you is your right ear?
Oh, there's two of us here, I'm sorry.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, I'm here. So there's two members right here, me, myself, and. And so I'm kind of keeping it, you know, between the two of us, so we don't have to jump back.
Things are much clearer now.
Okay, I'm sorry, you should have said something earlier.
No, I just noticed that, so.
Well, see, I have a monitor set to the left of us, and then I have the computer set to our right here. You know, but next time, we'll have that worked out. He should have his computer out by then. It took a dump over the weekend, so that, I wanted to make sure we had a quorum or had majority here for the cases, so that's why he's sitting over here.
Hey, Chris, Nussor, before we wrap up tonight, did I miss anything? Is there anything you want to bring up?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay, case number BA 2104, DESI VASSA 24 LLC will be issued to November 16th with no further notice at 7:30 PM.
Seven o'clock.
That'll be, that'll be at seven o'clock PM.
Sorry, seven o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Is there any further business with the board?
I just want to remind everybody, our next meeting in September is next Monday, because there's a Jewish holiday, the last Monday of the month, and it's at 7:30 next Monday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any business before the board? CNN, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?